Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our city council chambers on a cold snowy afternoon. I'd ask that you'd all rise. Please join me for a moment of silence and then we'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Ant, if I could have a roll call, please.
Ian Hamilton.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Brad Hahn.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
All right, moving forward with the agenda. You have it in front of you. I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support. Roll call.
Brewster.
Aye.
Ian.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
All right, at this time, we have public forum for anybody wanting to make comments about items not pertaining specifically to either items on the agenda. If you would like to speak, now is your time. If you would, come to the forward, step to the mic, give your name, and then tell us what you want us to hear. Seeing no movement, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. You had that before you?
Make the motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Ian.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, moving forward then to, there is no old business, moving on to number five on the new business. Discussion regarding an amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to downtown residential use. Like, open the, uh, motion, have, open the public hearing at this time?
So moved.
Support.
Uh, roll call.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Ian.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Is there anyone here wanting to speak to this issue of, uh, the consideration of allowing residential use of commercial property in the downtown area at this time? Briefly introduce to the mayor. Hold on. Go ahead. Please state your name.
April Schaefer.
Hold the mic just a little closer, April, if you would, please.
I'm sure you can hear me no matter what.
It's the people that watch on video that we're concerned about.
Well, obviously, I'm here, I'm in support of the zoning amendment change as it affects us. Um, we have three apartments in our building, which is just, um, east of here, a block, and we would like to bring a apartment in our main floor. So obviously, this would be, um, our way of, uh, getting a variance to do that. Now, I believe that the zoning amendment, um, change is very, by design, it was made so that there's all the stipulations that have to be met in order for you to be approved through the Board of Adjustment. So I do understand that there is a lot of concern with us all of a sudden having a downtown with a bunch of curtains, um, but I feel that the stipulations that are laid out, I mean, you have to have two-thirds of your space commercial in order for this to apply. You have to have 800 square foot in order for this to apply. You have to have the two rear side exits, and you have to have off-street parking, all of which we have, and I know that there's a lot of other businesses that it, that may not pertain to, but by design, naturally, they're not going to get approved for their variance. So it's going to keep it so that you don't have curtains downtown.
We have a couple of letters of support from members of the community.
Okay.
I think they've been given to Sam. Can I place them?
Yes, if you will, I'll take them, if you would, please. Okay. All right, you should have these in your pack, in your, by your desk there somewhere. One from Dennis Clatt, one from Chris Knuckles, both in favor, and I think earlier there was one, uh, speaking against it. Has there been any comments, oral, written, about it in the city offices? Anybody that's heard anything on the streets?
Yes, I have had some people contact me, uh, regarding this issue, and, uh, they have great concern about what it might do in the future as far as how it would affect the downtown. Most of them feel that it would be an inappropriate use and signal the demise of the downtown is kind of the summation of how they would put it to me. Um, I understand their concern. I have concern myself. Um, in this particular instance, as I look out that window and look down the street, I, I don't know how that zoning could be done or, because there is residential.
All around us.
Right around here.
[laughing]
So whether it's zoned properly or not, I, I don't know, and I don't know what that would take, but, uh, to, to, I guess I'm struggling trying to approve it as an ordinance across the entire downtown. Uh, I guess I'd like to hear some more discussion.
I can, uh, relate to Pete's comments. I've also had people concerned about it. Um, I had some people wondering if we can exclude, like, Third Avenue, um, in front of Ben Franklin and Prince, um, and then also the two blocks, like, where, um, the newspaper is and, um, like, Country Florist in that area, if you could exclude those two blocks. Um, so those are the comments I've heard.
In addition to that, uh, there's been some concern raised by, uh, some citizens about how we're going to be able to regulate it, how we're going to maintain that everyone is adhering, uh, to that. Curtains is one thing, toys out on the front of the sidewalk and stuff like that are another. Uh, some of those issues have been raised, so, uh, I guess myself, I'd like to know how we're going to enforce that, how we're going to be able to manage that aspect as well, so.
And, you know, the comments that I've heard, uh, along those same lines, questions about snow removal or responsibilities there. I've also talked to some business owners that are worried about, uh, how actions of a tenant may affect their business with, uh, the downtown area being so close, you know, uh, somebody, uh, somebody cooking in their kitchen starts a fire, burns the building down, you know, and these are all big, big whatevs, but, uh, all things that I think we have to take into consideration. And I would like to hear from Kurt about what his experience is in, because I know he's more worldly than we are as far as, uh, the impact of, of people, or rather, of towns that have, have had the mix of first-floor, uh, apartment spaces downtown.
Yeah, so.
It worked.
Testing. It is now on. Yeah, so, I certainly appreciate.
Just wait. Yeah, Todd, we, uh, when we had the forum, we turned the main volume up, so you might want to turn the handheld down.
That matter? Try it.
That's, yeah, that's good. Yeah, no, I, I certainly can appreciate both sides of the argument, but I think, very valid. Uh, I think the biggest concern, um, that anybody would raise with this would be turning your downtown, um, and you're driving through your downtown, you're seeing curtains in your front windows. That, that is a concern, right? I mean, you don't want to drive around downtown and see where your good business front, which could occupy a business that provides good taxes for our community, be a curtain in a residential, uh, use. However, I think in looking at the, uh, protocols and stipulations and what we're looking at here, um, I certainly think it's worth the discussion, um, because we're not, for what we're looking at, we're not taking away the front of any storefronts we're front here, correct?
That is correct.
So we're looking at something that would be on the back end, which with the proper stipulations, like you had said, Wayne and Tom, that you guys think through this properly, um, I think it could be a potential good use in some, some small fashion. Again, I don't, can't ever look at giving up twenty storefronts, because then, then I think you're giving up a little bit on what downtown use should be. Um, so it needs to be well thought out. I think there's stipulations in place that I think are outlined that give you guys good guidance making those decisions. Um, and this isn't new. There's other downtowns that, that do these type of projects, housing, and actually downtown housing, if it's done correctly, it's very modern and it's trending, and it's, uh, it's a good, naturally, great use for your downtown. So, um, and I would recommend you looking at what some of the urban communities are doing and point, obviously, we're not Des Moines, um, but if look what they're doing if they're downtown housing and how they're repurposing buildings to facilitate that, it's a good use. So I strongly encourage you to look at all the possibilities of what you can do.
I think the, the only problem I would have is to come up with a blanket statement that covers everybody, because it, as you mentioned, there, every building is different, and there's so many different scenarios at play here. Uh, you know, when you look at downtown, Kurt brought up the, the trendy downtown thing, yeah, that, that is, that is really hot. I think the thing that our downtown lacks is a unified vision, and I don't know that that's something that we're going to solve right here and right now, but being that we lack a unified vision for downtown, I don't want to make any blanket, uh, statements or blanket arrangements for the downtown space. But I do recognize that I think a case-by-case basis may be worth some merit.
Is the Board of Adjustments, I mean, if you have this amendment change and you have the stipulations in place, and we have to apply for their variance, at any point, can you not say, "Nope, you don't qualify. I'm sorry, this is not going to work." Now, this might work for top-notch stitching that isn't on Main Street.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And we have a building that has residential beside us that's zoned commercial, but that's okay. And we have a 2010 exception across from Northwestern State Bank where 100% commercial was converted to residential use, to apartment use, and there was no verbiage to back that up. I think this amendment, not only does it allow you guys the ability to police that better, but it also gives you a way to say, "No, here are our stipulations." And if we need to add it more, like, private parking or things like that, so that it's even more tightening of it, I'm completely, I agree with that. Um, but yes, I, I guess I feel very strongly on ours just because we are sit, in residential.
Yeah.
And, um, as to, I just wanted to address the toys outside, the, the grills, the snow removal. Um, a good landlord in their lease agreement is going to police all those things for you. So our, our tenants, a lot of people, before we went to the Planning and Zoning Committee, there was a lot of people that didn't even realize that we had three apartments above, because you don't see our tenants outside grilling, because our business is there. So we care about how that front comes off to people. And I think if you have other businesses with two-thirds of their space commercial, they're going to care what their reputation is too, so.
Yeah, and I, I, no, I, you're, you're 100% correct. Uh, I think the only difference that may apply there is that you own the building.
Correct.
Whereas a lot of these storefronts here are rented.
That's right.
So then, then we have to worry about them being at the mercy of a landlord who is either absentee or is more, more concerned about making money than it is about, uh, the business that might be up front.
Correct.
But these are all things that, yeah.
I would be interested in exploring the possibilities of addressing this through, is there a different zoning code that this block could be zoned that would be appropriate for that combination, or is it now, I guess, have we defined the, the downtown area, and should we redefine that? I don't know what the possibilities are there.
Yes. Certainly, you could consider rezoning. In fact, that's what April and I had talked about in the, in the beginning. That would be an op, that would be an option to just, to, for her to seek a rezoning. And there's a downside to that, too. And the downside to that is, is that her, her use would be, her current commercial use would then be grandfathered in, and that could potentially create issues for her down the road, because it's a commercial property that would no longer be in a commercial, um, zone, so.
Because that building, when it went up, for obvious reasons, used and took advantage of the business commercial zoning, which allows built zero front yard setback. Zone it to something else, it would require a 25-foot yard setback, which doesn't mean it can't be there. It does cause trouble future. So rezoning is not a slam dunk, yes.
Correct.
And the zoning changed after the one across from Northwestern was put in there, correct?
No.
No.
Before that?
No.
It was prior.
I checked. It was, it was, the zoning code was adopted about a month before that came forward.
Okay.
And that went directly to the, the Board of, of Adjustment.
At this point, I think we've gotten a lot of good discussion going on.
Does anybody else from the public, we're in a public hearing?
Hi, my name's Carolyn Marshall, and I have a business downtown, and I am opposed to the ordinance. Um, I talked to Sam because I just wanted to make sure that I had a good understanding of which buildings would qualify for this, you know, as far as the 800 square feet in the commercial. And, um, Sam and I's conversation led me to believe that pretty much every building downtown where I am located, for those of you who don't know, I'm at 314 Ninth Street, in the middle of the block. Sam identified that each of those buildings on my block and also across the street would also, um, be in with that, with the exception of Adventure, because Adventure opens up into here headquarters, Beauty Salon back there. So, um, I'm opposed to it. This morning, I went out at 8:05, and I took pictures of the parking all behind my building. I took pictures to the right, pictures to the left, and around, um, the old Eagles there, and there were no parking spots available. I, myself, do not have a parking spot out front of the boutique, so I come very early in the morning so that I can get right in front of my store. I'm delivering, I'm coming in, going all day. I need to cater to the needs of the public and also to our funerals, so I've got to be loading and unloading, you know, at a given time. This morning, I was out the door loading by seven to be there at eight. But I have some concerns with the residential back there, also for liability reasons. Behind me, I have FedEx, UPS, speedy delivery, and my biggest one is Craftwear Pottery coming with a semi, um, from Omaha. So if we get kids back there playing or anything, I'm very concerned. We've got one small child that plays back there now, that's maybe about two years old, right in the parking. I do not have parking behind my facility for me. The two spots that sit behind that belong to Truly Scrumptious, so I have no parking. And then on the days that, um, Dr. Brown is in, there is no parking whatsoever. I mean, I can circle and circle and try to get it, and obviously, I don't want my employees or everybody having to park on the main outside, so parking is a significant issue right there. Um, also, like I said, the kids playing back there is a liability, because where, you know, if somebody rents and they have children, where are they supposed to go out in the backyard and play? Um, the kitchen liability, I think I may have been, been the one that spoke to Wayne about that. Um, right next door to me is Truly Scrumptious, which is an inspected kitchen. They are in and out of there checking on her all the time. Um, like Wayne said, you'd have to make sure that the landlord was policing the place, because that's under the assumption that the business is owned. Like, I think theirs is a completely different issue with what is stitched down the road here in a residential. It's a freestanding building. If it would start on fire, it's not taking down the whole entire block. Um, you know, where we're all hooked together. Um, and I can identify with, with the concerns of what it's going to do to our downtown. I mean, we don't know, but I go to market just about every Sunday, and we are coming home in the evenings to offload our things, and one of the employees goes with me. We go to a wholesale market that's in Sioux Falls, and on two separate occasions, just in the last two months, we have come home at about 5:30 either on a Saturday or on a Sunday evening, and there is some residential places downtown where they are outside tailgating, grilling in our downtown street, um, drinking beer, grilling right on the curb in a commercial area, and those are concerns for me. You know, that's not what we want our downtown to turn into. We want all of our buildings to be consumed, hopefully, by retail, um, so that we can continue to draw traffic, each with our own little niche, so that we can lure people to want to come to Sheldon, Iowa and use those, um, spots for retail. And I just have concerns that if, if the back ends end up rental, like Wayne said, I'm renting, and then the back end is renting, so who's there to police what's going on between the two? Or, you know, if there's parties, or if there's loudness, or if they're entertaining right out the back, or things like that, so, um, and the parking is my biggest concern. The parking is the biggest concern. I, I talked to Todd, I think, when I took this location where I'm at, just even about getting a delivery vehicle spot out in front, we talked about that. I've been here a year and a half ago, what, what I needed to do, because there were no spots. Everybody thinks since the Eagles is empty, that there's plenty of room there, but right now, the tenants above Revelations and the tenants above Truly Scrumptious, um, which is about five or six vehicles, are all parking back there. Um, they used to park last year right in front of my store, and they worked the night shift, so they were in front of my store all day long until like 4:30, quarter to five, when they would go and work five to five or six to six, and it became an issue. So then I talked to the landlords downtown, and they were fabulous. They immediately, um, had some papers and some documentation written up. They put them out on all of their tenants' cars. They actually put some up on the doors downtown and talked to them about taking up all of the parking spaces, because if all those spaces are taken up, we have nothing for the consumer. You know, they'll go around the block and around the block, and there's no place to park. You know, a lot of our town draws in some older customers, elderly customers, and they want to be able to, to find a place to park. So I just wanted to express those concerns while you guys are taking into consideration the ordinance. And like I said, I think JT is a completely different thing, you know, top-notch down there. I think she has provided the off-street parking specifically for each of her tenants. Um, they are right, you know, residential on the left, residential on the right. I think, I think somehow, if the ordinance could figure out a way to make some exceptions with it, I just don't know how, how we could go about that. Or if it would be a case-by-case study where the, the council and the board would be asked to look into each individual one when someone brought their desires to your attention, if, if you could look into that and have to just do a case-by-case, I'm not sure how the best way to, to go about that would be, but just, just some food for thought while you guys consider the change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Speak to one of the issues that just came up. The Speaker just made a good point about analyzing this on a case-by-case basis. When you're dealing with a special exception use, that is per your zoning ordinances, a case-by-case analysis. In order to get the right to use a property in this way under, um, a special exception use, an application would have to be made to the Board of Adjustment, which requires a notice procedure, so opportunity for neighbors to attend a meeting and give input, and then the Board of Adjustment would have to consider certain minimum conditions, which are listed. Those are just the minimum ones that have to be looked at, but the Board of Adjustment, on a case-by-case basis, would have the legal right and authority to impose other specific conditions and requirements based on the, the proposal being made by that property owner. So there has been a question and concern about what does this look like? That's the process. It is certainly case-by-case and provides opportunity for the Board of Adjustment to take a look at the specific property in question. I would also note that any decision by the Board of Adjustment is potentially subject to appeal, so there is that additional, uh, safety net in place if a party feels that they've been aggrieved by a special exception that has been granted, so.
Do you want to clarify the parking as well? I think misunderstanding of the parking.
As to whether it has to be two spots on the property?
Yeah, so, I, yeah, exactly.
So, the way this is written, and as I read it, in order to qualify, there have to be two off-street parking spaces available, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to be available on that particular piece of property. They would have to identify the two dedicated spaces or available spaces that would be linked to the residential use. Is that what you're discussing?
Yeah, because I was, I was interpreting the ordinance, yeah, I was interpreting that property owner had to provide two spaces on the block.
Well, I, I think that's, that's a question, and I think the Board of Adjustment would have that discretion of saying, "What's your plan for parking?" Well, it's these two in a public parking lot. The Board of Adjustment may say, "Well, that's, that's not going to meet muster." Now, I'm not the Board of Adjustment, so I can't make that call for them, but again, there would have to be analysis of what parking is available and whether the Board thought it was enough. And if a citizen said, "Their plan is to provide two parking spaces here, but the concern is that takes up my customers' regular spots," that certainly would be something that the Board should consider. Um, so that's the legal side of this proposal.
Whereas the current upstairs parking, or upstairs residential isn't required to provide any, there's no parking provision, right? They just use a public block. So that would be a difference, correct?
Yeah, I don't have the, the code in front of me, but I'm not aware of what's required for top-floor parking.
I don't think there's any requirement, so that's.
But if that's the case, Todd, we're hearing through, through her testimony that that's a challenge already, that there's not enough parking to be had to begin with, and they're choosing to park in areas that we don't want them to park in.
I understand. I was trying to point out there's a difference between.
Right.
Could make it more restrict, show adjustment. I just wanted to make sure we understood there was a difference between the way the two are.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, because that was going through my head at the moment, was, how do we deal with what we got, and then how are we going to deal with what we maybe want, I hope, so.
I'm not advocating for or against it, just wanted to make sure that we all understood the difference.
Right.
Thank you. Are there any more comments from the public at this time? Okay. I think this bears some further thought and discussion. There are pluses and minuses. You know, a lot of the concerns, the fire in the kitchen, the, uh, kids playing out front, we already have that going on, don't we, with second-floor apartments there?
Sounds like it.
Uh, you know, so it's not that big of a stretch in my mind to go down 15 feet to the first floor, but this is the.
It's, it's just whether it's perceived to be a plus or a minus.
Mm-hmm. You know? We have a housing shortage in town, so this opens up that. I mean, we can, we can sit here and we can argue it both ways all the rest of the, another hour, probably, but.
I think the housing thing has opened up, because there's a lot of stuff, if you drive around, that's for rent. So I don't think where housing is tight, just as, depends on what you want.
Yeah, I think Wayne's pointing about what is the vision for our downtown development, and how does this fit into that overall vision, and, uh...
You know, I'd like to redefine what downtown is.
Yeah. I guess I would prefer that approach, too.
It'd be a start.
Because I don't have a problem with, you know, top-notch over here. It's when you get into the Ninth Street, Third Avenue, that's where I start having an issue with it.
And I mean, if we look at it realistically, taking the parking provision into effect, would there be any downtown business eligible for this particular variance, based on that specific parking thing, if you're not taking into account community parking or parking that is designated for the business? I mean, is it, obviously, top-notch has it. They have the cut-in.
The old Eagles building would have it.
Yeah, I guess, yep.
Because there's privately-owned spots around that building.
Yeah, sure.
On the south side of the building, those are not publicly-owned spots.
But there wouldn't be very many. I mean, it would be few and far between.
Correct.
I mean, between that, it has to have rear or side access, not a front access. The minimum 800 square feet, it's got to be, you know, two-thirds of the business has to be for commercial property. I mean, there, it's, it is restrictive already, and, and it can be cinched down even more by the Board of Adjustment if need be. So I think we need to just let this simmer a little bit. Uh, if there are additional comments from the community, both for and against, because we have them both right now, uh, let's just see what comes out and bring it up for discussion again in two weeks, is my, is my suggestion. again in two weeks, is my suggestion. And if we're in agreement with that...
Yeah.
By consensus, then let's do that.
Keep the public hearing open and we'll have it on the next agenda.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
We've had some great input. I think if we can have more of that, all the better. Okay. So then there will be no first reading at this point?
So we do not have to close the public hearing?
You can keep it open and put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Does that require a motion?
Typically, you do a motion to close.
To close it, yeah.
We're not closing it, so...
I'm just looking around everywhere. By consensus, I think everybody's in agreement with that, so if we can operate that way in this one, I'd be fine with that.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So then I would like to move on to item B then. First reading of the ordinance amending section 105.10 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to waste storage containers. Any public comments on that? Part of our agenda. Something you'd like to add? Any discussion?
I've had some feedback on this from citizens. A lot of them are voicing concerns that they're having to pay for the can and they're getting nothing in return. I said, you're getting a bigger can to put more garbage in. But they feel that if they have to spend that much money for a can, they should have some type of concession going forward on rate increases and that. Because they said next year will be followed by a rate increase and then another rate increase and another rate increase. So I've heard some concerns about having to front the can to benefit the haulers. And now we have to turn around and a year from now, we'll have to have a rate increase. So I've heard that from about a handful of people, and I said I would bring it up at the meeting.
I've had similar comments, and I'm just wondering, have we taken that tact with the haulers yet? Have we explored that on how they can, since it's bringing some efficiencies to their process, how they can reciprocate moving forward? Have we talked to them about that?
Right now, the... What they're offering in return is two additional recycling days. So that's something that you would have to decide is enough. We are on basically the front end of the four-year contract. If I might, Angie, we have any rate increases scheduled? I don't think we have any anticipated, do we, for the...
I don't know.
For the garbage?
I don't think the contract...
I don't believe the contract anticipates any... I guess it'd be a question for one of the haulers. Are there any rate increases anticipated in the current contract? Because I don't have it in front of me, other than a fuel surcharge if gas price...
Twenty-five cents.
Okay. Twenty-five cents per account, per year, per month.
And I know in speaking with the haulers, they had mentioned that landfill rates had gone up and that they had not passed that cost on to the consumer, that they were absorbing that cost here lately.
If I might?
Yes.
So, Tom, if I could more directly answer your question, is that during the discussions on this, the reality is, is that because there's a signed contract, it's, you know, we could ask that it be opened up and ask for additional concessions? We had an agreement here that both haulers were on board with, and if I had pushed harder, I'm not sure that we'd be able to, we would have the current agreement that we have. I know that there's other communities, for example, where the haulers do additional cleanup days, yard waste pickup days. And those are all discussions, though, that we would, and some communities have weekly recycling. And those are all discussions, though, that are probably more appropriate for full contract negotiation. But you do have the ability to say, you know what, this isn't enough. We want to go back and ask for more. I don't think that you'll get that. So I think I'm willing to reopen that conversation.
Sure.
But I think we have a good agreement.
And we have to start somewhere. I mean, we've identified especially the recycling portion of this, increasing recycling in the town. We have to start somewhere, and this is a good first step. We're not in the position to renegotiate the contract, so let's start here and then build momentum. And then when we get to the end of the contract, then we can see where we sit after that. And I truly do think that by increasing the frequency of recycling and taking some of the guesswork about when the recycling is going to go out will increase the use of recycling in town. And therefore, it will ease the burden on some of the trash, and we can look forward to some, maybe some change in some things once the contract's up.
Further discussion? Are you willing to make that as a motion?
I'll make it as a motion.
Support.
Any other questions? Everybody understand the motion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Moving on then to item C, under new business number five. First reading of the ordinance amending section 106.04 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to frequency of recycling collection. Other comments from anybody? Discussion from the council?
To approve.
I'm Missy Gertler.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I am married to Mark, who does decreed disposal. And the recycling, this discussion goes kind of with the last discussion that you had. You were talking about our, we've been meeting about every month for the last two years, and what we decided is we would do the cans, and that was our first step to recycle more. And so we were going, our concession was, we had the quota raise every four years. That comes in August. The landfill rates increase. This past year, it was a dollar in July, and so that would cover those four years for the rest of our contract. And then we would recycle every Thursday. And in 2020, that would be five additional Thursdays that we would be recycling. And hopefully, our recycle numbers at the landfill would increase because of the cans. And that was our first step. For the second step, to apply for a grant to get every resident in Sheldon a recycling can. And so that was this, getting everybody to purchase a can, a 65-gallon can, is our first step to getting everyone a recycling can through a grant through the state. So they kind of go hand in hand, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point.
And I guess I just, along that same line, we have been talking about it for a couple of years. I think it's time to move.
Yep.
Second reading on both, being November 20.
Okay. Then at this point, we can entertain a motion to approve the first reading and move it on to a second reading.
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
All right. Item D, resolution adopting new 28E agreement with Lynn Township in Sioux County for Fire Protection Services. You want to summarize the meeting that you had with them, Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an update of a 21-year-old agreement, which was signed in December of 1998. And we discussed this earlier this year. And the Iowa Fire Chiefs Association, the recommendation is for a valuation that's fairly close to what Lynn Township was already providing us. And they were willing to ink an agreement with us that basically takes it to the 60.75 cents per 1,000. Right now, it's at approximately 54 cents. And so this will then become the template for discussions with the other three townships. I want to thank Al Stewart for his help and also Brad Hint, and it's been a good conversation.
Yep.
Any questions?
You know, and then this, you know, once we get this going, it's ongoing. We don't have to worry about renewing it, increasing every year. We know we're at the maximum percentage and we can move forward. Because 21 years ago is when we had this first battle, and some other townships haven't changed in 21 years. So...
Further discussion?
I'll entertain the motion to approve the 28E.
Okay.
Unless there's any other further discussion.
Is there support for that motion?
I'll support.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
All right. And then finally, new business. Need to authorize the hiring of Tim Lushen.
Lushen.
Lushen, as a part-time reserve police officer.
Need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
So move.
Support.
Your confidence. Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
All right. Moving forward then, Jake, I think we're ready for your report.
Thank everyone for having me today. I was just getting started, some new things at our aquatic center for this year. We added 16 new lounge chairs at our aquatic center this year for more seating, and it's a little more comfortable. They're not just the plastic we used to buy that are cheap, that would break about every other year. We have some nice sturdy ones now. We're hoping that will last longer for us. Some new things you guys may have noticed, we have new shades at the outdoor aquatic center. We purchased four new shades. They're not the ones, we used to have to clamp them up, and we had a lot of moving parts that would break in these. These ones are just meant to stand, and there's not a lot of moving parts. So we're hoping these will last longer for that. And another thing that maybe you guys well is, we got a basketball hoop at the outdoor aquatic center that was paid for by the Sheldon Noon Kwanas as well. So that wasn't any cost to us, a donation by the Sheldon Noon Kwanas for that. In years past, the being constructed, it used to be lifeguards, kind of not an issue anymore, which is good for us. This year, we had 27 full lifetime, part-time lifeguards as well. So we're sitting pretty well when it comes to lifeguards in that regard. When it comes to the document that was presented for the comparisons of each year, you'll see that total from last year were down $6,000. One of the main losses that we had was our daily admission, which was down about $4,000. So when it came to memberships, everything seemed to be increased and decreased in some areas. The only change that you'll see is the family outdoor is at 82, but technically, it's actually at 91 because of the babysitter pass that we added. That's just a separate category. So technically, we have 91 family passes this year. Last year, we, I was here, we passed the ordinance of having a babysitter fee added to the babysitting pass, or to the family pass. So that's really it that I have for that. Do you guys have any questions in regards of the outdoor aquatic center?
You know, usage was down. Do you think a lot of that had to do with weather?
Um, yeah. Looking back at it, yeah. And actually, what really hurt us more than anything is probably, just looking back at the weather, was the 75 degrees. So we're open, but you're not getting that many kids. And the problem is, we're still full-staffed, so we're not getting the revenue that we'd like, but we're still open at 75. Because our ordinance is, anything below 70, we don't open. So there was a couple of times that we would push it back to stay open, so we'd open at 3 o'clock instead of 1, just to try to be open no matter what. So it seemed like we had a lot of the 75, 78, and not a lot of people like to go to the pool at, it's usually the 85s in sunny, so. And then with that, then, uh, there's an ordinance that's looking to get passed, or not an ordinance, excuse me. We're looking, as the rec department is, to change our daily fee to $2 per customer after 6:00 PM. This was actually brought to us by our managers, our pool managers. They were seeing a lot of membership people after 6, but no one, no daily fees after 6 o'clock, because not a lot of people want to pay the $5 or $4 after 6 o'clock to use our aquatic center. So basically, what this would do would be to increase the daily admission, because it's not even there after 6 o'clock. So that's the explanation for this change. Is there any questions on that?
Your expense stays the same during that time, anyway.
Exactly. Our belief is that we can maybe bring more NCC students that want to just come to the pool for two hours and stuff. So we just saw more memberships. We're coming after, but no daily admission, because no one wants to pay the $5 or $4 after 6:00 PM to be there.
So you brought up 75-degree days. Do you feel we need to revisit how the ordinance is read for what days the pool is open? Or is that just, depends on if the clouds are out, or how does that work?
So I've seen some pools, they go by the tenants at a certain time. So it could be after 6 o'clock. If there's 10 or less, or whatever the number you, whatever number gets brought up, 15 or less, then they close down the pool, or they close down, or we could close down the slide, or... The only problem is, a lot of people come to our aquatic center to use the slides, so that's the issue that we have with that. But that's how typically it gets run. So it's kind of one of those tough issues that we've had. I've been there personally when we've only had three kids there for three hours, because the health inspector was there, so I was there for three hours, and when we had three kids there the whole time, because it was like 72 degrees. So it's just kind of how we want to operate. I was under the assumption of, we're open no matter what, how many kids are there, and that's how I will operate until a year further.
Okay, Todd?
So Wayne, just so you understand, there was a time when we did close, due to low numbers. The council got a fair amount of negative feedback because we did that. So we were told a number of years ago, if closing time is 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock, that's when it closes. So that addresses evening hours, 70, 75.
I'm sure I'm not the first person who's ever asked that question.
Would it save us any, maybe? Would it increase the complaints you guys get, like the...
Fair enough.
I like the idea of trying to increase utilization, because that solves a lot of issues, right? And if we can make the same amount of money with more people coming, fine.
Is there any data about how many out-of-town, the out-of-town numbers that we have?
Sadly, we don't have that type of system. Example, like the LRC, they have that where they could... Example, at the, like, the LRC, they have that where they could do that. We don't have that type of system. Ours is just the old, the old checkbox kind of thing. So, so it's hard for us to grab all those type of stats without having that, that kind of system, which is expensive, as you would probably know. And then, just an update on, we have an update from the indoor. Just, just so everyone knows is, according to the agreement, the, the city doesn't have, we don't, we don't run the pool, we don't operate the pool. This summer, Sam told us to go out there and check and make sure at least that it's, the bathrooms and everything was clean, at least for the facility. So we maybe went above and beyond our agreement that we have with the indoor pool. But they're currently going under construction as we speak, and, and...
Will the indoor pool ever open again?
It will. Once, once we get the okay from them, we will put that on our social media, as well as other, other ways possible. So we're trying to, we've been in communication with them. We're trying to keep them up to date and get us feedback, so then we can feed back the public. We don't want to give you false information. So once we get the okay, we'll let everyone know as well, so.
I know, it's a great amenity and it's missed, and I hear about it all the time. And it's nothing we can do, certainly nothing you can do about it. It's just, it's unfortunate.
No, but there is a lot of negativity, negativity out there with it. But I will say, I try to be optimistic. The positive thing that comes out of this aquatic center is if anyone that's ever had someone in swimming lessons, us being able to not close our swimming lessons or delay our swimming lessons, and being able to move, use that facility for that has been huge. There was, I could probably say, we had 15 to 18 times this year where we had to use that indoor facility because of weather. So trying to be optimistic about the situation. So it's a good amenity to, to have for us as a community, so.
All right. We need a motion, I think, to approve the recommendation to lower the admission from 5 to 2 after 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Support.
Need further discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Thanks, Jake.
Thanks for having me, guys.
All right, moving forward here. Lyle, I understand you have a letter you'd like to read to us.
Do we need to get Kleenex ready first?
Yeah, you might, maybe for me. I'll do my best here. As you all are already aware, I have submitted my notice of my intentions to retire on November 27, after completing over 30 years of service with the Sheldon Police Department. I have many memories of my years at Sheldon PD that I'll carry with me for the rest of my life. Police officers oftentimes get to see people at their very best, and also at their very worst. I've had the opportunity to do some very rewarding things as a police officer. I've also had to walk beside people who were overcome with grief and have cried with them while telling them that their loved one had died, knowing that their lives would never be the same again. I've met people who have far more character and class than I ever could have imagined. I've also met people who are evil to the very roots of their soul. Sometimes I've been surprised by who was actually evil and who was good. Policing has become increasingly challenging over the past 30 years. Technological changes are very difficult to keep up with, and most of these changes are very costly. The number of applicants for police jobs are down dramatically. Budget constraints are something we all have to deal with. Some of the people we have to deal with are becoming increasingly challenging and difficult. The level of respect for officers has declined. There's an overall decline in morality in our country. The profession of being a police officer is dan, is very dangerous. Every day, our officers put on their uniforms while facing the reality that today might be their last day. We've sometimes attended funerals of fallen officers and have had to face the reality that we're not invincible. I would like to thank some individuals that have made a special impact on my life. I'd like to thank my heavenly Father for watching over and protecting me and hiding me underneath the shelter of His wings. He has blessed me far more than I could have possibly imagined. I want to thank my wife, Brenda, for always supporting me. Thank you for always being there for me through the good times and the bad. I'd like to thank my children. It's not always fun having a dad who's a police officer. Thank you for your support. I'd like to thank my mother, who's present here today, who I'm certain has prayed for me every day for the past 30 years. I'd like to thank our Sheldon PD officers. They work to protect our citizens every second, of every hour, of every day, of every month, of every year, and you should be proud of each and every one of them. They perform their duties admirably. Their jobs are very challenging. Remember them in your prayers and express your appreciation for them when you see them on the streets. I'd like to thank my administrative assistant, Elaine Bogart, for everything she does for our department. She has many duties she faithfully performs each day, oftentimes fills the role of being our team mom. I would also like to thank the area law enforcement agencies, who our department works with on a daily basis. Sheldon PD has a close relationship with several different agencies and have benefited from their assistance on countless occasions. I'd like to give a special thanks to the deputies, dispatchers, and jailers at the O'Brien County Sheriff's Department. Their assistance to our department is greatly appreciated, and we couldn't do our jobs without them. I personally have gotten to know several police chiefs and sheriffs over my years at Sheldon PD as well. I won't mention any of them by name for fear that I might forget someone, but they know who they are. I'm grateful for their mentoring, their support, their friendships, and the many conversations we've had over the years. I'd also like to thank every city employee I've had the privilege of working side by side with. We truly are a family that works well together, and I'll miss you all. Special thanks to Sam, Todd, Angie, and Kurt. I've attended more meetings with you than I care to count. I sometimes see more of you than I do of my own family. I heard once that the average person spends a year of their life attending meetings. I think some of us would have to admit that our attendance at meetings is above average. Sorry, Sam. I'd also like to thank Mayor Gales and the City Council for everything they have done for the city of Sheldon and for our department. You have thankless jobs, get paid almost nothing, and yet have to sometimes endure criticism and cynicism from people who are sure they know how to do your jobs better than you do. Thank you. And finally, I'd like to thank the citizens of Sheldon, who have allowed me to be their police chief for the past 16 and a half years. I've been overwhelmed by the many expressions of gratitude the public has given me during the past weeks after announcing my retirement plans. Sheldon is filled with many great people, and I'll always be grateful for their support for me and our department. God bless.
Lyle, on behalf of the citizens, my honor and privilege, say thank you. Long time. Wish you the best. Moving forward then, it is my request that you would confirm the appointment of Officer...
Do we need to accept?
Oh, yes, yes, correct. Hold on. Let's, uh...
Well, I know that.
We need a motion to accept Lyle's resignation, retirement, before we can move on here.
With great regret, I will make that motion to accept Lyle Chief Wolkmo's resignation letter.
I'll support that.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right. Now, moving forward. At this point, I would like to ask for your confirmation of David Dykstra to step in as the interim chief of police. He has tenure on the force. He is willing to do this job for the interim. He is not interested in being, serving as our next full-time chief. But at this point, I would ask that you, I would entertain a motion to accept him as our interim chief.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Thank you, David, for being willing to do that. Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Then the work begins of finding a replacement. There are different ways we could go. I'm going to let Sam explain what, we've kind of talked about, what he's thinking. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I've already taken steps to update the job description. The updated draft is in, is in your packets. Not a lot of changes to it. The last time the job description was updated was prior to 2003, when we had a dispatch center, so references to that have been removed. The rest of it is basically the same. Iowa code has changed a little bit, too, and so Micah helped me update the job description in that regard, regarding the, the minimum requirements for the position. It is my recommendation, and I will also fully support if you decide you want to keep it in, keep it an internal process in terms of managing the application. I do recommend that we consider a request for qualifications and seek proposals from qualified consultants. I printed this out for all of you, also given a couple of copies to the media table. And I think it is worth considering. The cost, based on what I've been able to gather so far, will probably be in, somewhere in the, in the $10,000 to $15,000 range. I think that is a worthwhile cost to consider. I am asking that, that those who respond submit an hourly rate or a à la carte rate, so that I can help keep the cost down, because there's a lot that I can do to help reduce the cost. I think having the, having the, and I'll just speak from my, my own experience, having gone through the process just a year ago. I think having a consultant that you can ask, that candidates can, potential candidates can ask questions of, that you probably might not be comfortable calling the mayor and asking, or calling the city manager and asking. Talking to somebody in law enforcement over at Storm Lake at a meeting recently, law enforcement applications are down. And so we, and they're down significantly across the country and across the state. And we, we want to make sure we, we find the right person. The right person might be internal, that right person might be external. And I think having a consultant to help us with the process, the, the two people, I've been in contact with three. Two are former chiefs of police, and the other is a, a city manager who's done, who has a consulting firm, who has done chief of police searches as well. And so those are the main three. And I've also reached out to the Iowa League of Cities to see if there's any, there's any more. So stand for questions.
I think after going through the search for city manager twice, I think the second time was a lot easier on the council and the mayor of that process. And I think we got better candidates the second time around. And if we had questions about the process, it was easy for us to get ahold of the consultants and ask them questions without having to burden the mayor. So I, I think it's worthwhile looking into, see what the fees, costs are. I think this day and age, I think we need to have the best candidates that we can in law enforcement.
To add to that, I'd say, I think the negotiation process went fairly smooth, too. Because we didn't, we were able to utilize the expertise of that consultant as well.
And I think that we saw that they had access to more people than we would ever access on our own.
Yep. Correct. I think we also have to recognize that there's a cost for us to do it as well. And it isn't just in the advertising of it, but in time and, and effort that it takes to, to facilitate what these people do very well. I think it's something very much worth consideration. This is a professional position that is integral to our community, and it deserves for us to be able to, to view the very best options, so.
And if you think about it, we're all members of the community, coming from different subsects, some different cross-sections. None of us here, I would think, would be qual, uniquely qualified to identify the best potential candidate for police chief. There's a tool for every job. I've been accused of being a tool more than once, but, um, but no, I, I think we, especially in a scenario that, you know, Chief Wolkmo was with us for over 16 years, and Lord willing, we'll have, the next person that we hire will be in this position for, for that amount of time as well. And I don't think we, this is not something we want to cheap out on, just to save a buck, knowing how much this means for our future. Because not only will this new police chief have to manage the staff in place here, but this new police chief is also going to be integral in trying to get new officers to join. Because as you mentioned, we are at a definite lack of, of qualified law enforcement candidates just in general. So making sure that we have the right person as police chief is going to be paramount, because that might be the difference between a, a law enforcement candidate going to city A versus city B because of who that police chief is.
Any further comments?
So I guess I would make a motion that we, we pursue the, the costs, the, the cost analysis for what a firm would charge, and then act upon that once we have more information on what a firm would do.
Support.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right. At this time, we would like to hear from you, Sam, on your report. If there's anything to say.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
That's what we love about you, Sam.
Anything from you guys over there?
They're going to hate me, Wayne. All right, just a couple of things. Some of you may have noticed, the street sweepers been kind of burning the midnight oil and working on Saturdays. In case you're wondering, the reason we did that is because leaves have been falling late and the weather is not cooperating, so we wanted to get every helpful hour we can to get some of those leaves off of the street as possible. If you didn't know, we really can't sweep. The street sweeper has, carries water and, and sprays for two reasons. One for dust control, and two, she uses the manufacturer's product to run up that water. So that's why we are working overtime with that. A couple of project updates. The asphalt overlay that Blacktop Services was hired to do on 8th Street, 5th Avenue, and 4th Avenue is complete. Satisfied with the work there. I, I haven't seen the final quantities yet, but doing spot checks during, I expect that to come in very much on budget. 16th Street... to come in, uh, very much on budget. Um, Sixteenth Street, uh, on the engineering, have their subcontractor come back and, uh, edge mill and, uh, place, uh, more material on Sixteenth Street. It now needs crown. So that's a good thing. We'll have better drainage. Um, it also doesn't have the surface segregation any longer. So I'm happy with that. It still need to come back and, uh, bring manholes up to grade. And there's one residential driveway that, uh, we denied also that still needs to be processed. See when we get that done. Um, Crossroads North, just to give you an FYI, completion date on that project was October thirty-one. Obviously, uh, that project, sewer main is in and did patch pressure tests, manholes, uh, still need pressure test. The water main, I believe they finished that today. They've got a lot of paving yet. Meeting yesterday with the contractor. Obviously, the main concern I shared with them is we do not want to build up a project. So they are putting together some documentation that says they'll provide, uh, uh, temporary access to that lot if, if, whatever they need to do to not, uh, progress, like to make on there, um, there. And, uh, last would be wastewater treatment plant. Um, they are finishing up the demo and, uh, hopefully going to do some grading and potentially spread some more topsoil. Yep, it's, it's snowing.
Got snowplows on yet?
We do now, so we can melt them very quick. Truck's ready to go.
Kurt, anything you'd like to share? Lyle, you have anything else? You've said your piece. All right. You're good. Uh, just a quick reminder, or no, I mean, councilman to the left, any comments from you guys?
Uh, Monday, Veterans Day. Uh, thanks to all the veterans in our community. And if you get a chance, get out to one of the schools for the activities.
Thank you, Sean. Councilman to my right?
Just want to say thanks again, Lyle. We appreciate you.
Uh, just a reminder now with the, uh, November one change of calendar, uh, parking on the streets, if you don't know already, is, uh, now in effect, the ban from two A.M. to six A.M. Uh, it starts with a friendly warning and then a ten dollar ticket. Is that right? So just a reminder to the public for that. I have nothing further, so I would intonate, intonate a motion to adjourn at this time.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.